Welcome, everybody. Calling me in to order, please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jamal Brown from the United Church of Christ, good friend of mine, and he has a special, special message tonight, and I think it's gonna be terrific. So Pastor, you're on, please come to the podium.
He gives you quite a buildup.
He deserves it. You ought to hear his sermons.
I've been preaching.
I have. Go ahead, Pastor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I come with a humble spirit tonight, and the mayor asked me to come, considering what has happened over the last forty-eight hours in our country and what has occurred even over the last year. I come in the spirit of the one thing that all of us are required of and asked of that goes across socioeconomic background, goes across color issues, goes across educational issues, goes across whether you are Republican, Democrat, or Independent. The Sovereign One from above has called all of us to one eternal principle, and I come offering the invocation on this eternal principle, and that is a four-letter word. And I would ask that you all say this word with me and spell it out, and it starts with an L. L.
O.
L.
L.
O.
B.
E. And that spells love. God has called us to love one another, and the Bible says, "By this shall they know you are my disciples," by the way you love one another. I come offering this invocation because our world needs love when everybody is now digressing to hate and malice and all the things that would destroy the very fiber of what this country should be all about, and it is all about, is love. So I come asking us that we, those who will manage the town's issues and requests, to remember this, that God still sits high and he looks low, and he says to whom much is given, much is required. And the one thing he requires of all of us is that we love. Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for who you are. We thank you for your grace and your mercy, for your grace and mercy was founded on the one eternal principle that you are, and that is love. Father, help, Lord God, those who will legislate and manage the town's issues and concerns, Lord God, this board, to operate in love. Let those who are here to share, Lord God, and share their concerns, operate in love. Let those being done by justice operate in love. And Father, we ask now for your eternal spirit that gives us wisdom, guidance, and direction in power those whom you've given power to, but let them all behave, let us all behave in this one request that you have commanded, that we love. Bless now this meeting, and we give you thanks for your presence in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Very important words, Pastor. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, sir.
Number four, adjustment approval, the October 3rd, 2017 meeting agenda, Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt the October 3rd, 2017 meeting agenda with no adjustments.
Second. Motion made in second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number five, public comment period. We have one person signed up, and I may ask you to pronounce your last name for me. Sayo? Am I, I got that part right? All right, and you help me with the last name, will you?
Adenya.
All right, come to the podium, please. And again, speak your name and your address, and then go for it. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
My name is Shaya Adenah. I'm at Avance Care Holly Springs, 1108 Kentworth Drive in Holly Springs, and I'm the main provider there. So I'm just coming to talk about the building that we're trying to move into on Main Street Square. I've been at that location at 1108, which is in Main Street Square, for over three years. And when we opened, you know, we thought, you know, it'll be a small practice, and we'll be able to manage the space that we have. Luckily for us, we got really busy, and, and you know, with the growth in Holly Springs, we need a bigger location. And so we've been trying to get this location for three years now, and I'm trying to stay in the same area so that I don't lose patience and that we stay accessible. And so Trey and his group have been the ones that have gotten us this far, where we actually have a location and have a building that we're looking at. And, you know, I'm hoping that we can get it approved so that we can get this started as soon as possible. So I appreciate all the support that we've gotten from Holly Springs. I, you know, when I opened my practice, I didn't realize it was gonna grow that fast, but, you know, everybody's been so wonderful, and so we just wanna keep giving that great service to the, to the people of Holly Springs.
Tell us the name of the service again, please.
I'm a medical physician, family physician, so it's a primary care practice.
Family physician. Okay, good. Do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so very much.
And best luck. If we can help, give us a call. Give us a call. Thank you. All right. We'll close the public hearing at this point and go to Agenda Item 6A, Special Recognitions and one of my favorite passions. October is Bullying Prevention Month, and I'm gonna ask Sarah Carter to come forward, and she's gonna tell us a little bit about Youth Thrive, and then I'm gonna add a few little things, then we're gonna give you a proclamation. So tell us a little bit, if you would, about Youth Thrive.
Thank you. Yes, Youth Thrive has been in existence since 2011. It kind of started when there was a crisis with youth homicides happening in Wake County and really wanted to wrap around services across all different areas of the county and really tapping into all the different youth service providers that exist in, in this resource-rich community. And since then, we've kind of morphed from focusing just on youth homicide, but really looking at the data that's available in Wake County about the issues that are facing young people here. And last year, we really prioritized work around educational success in eliminating bullying and suicide in Wake County. Bullying is one of the main reasons young people miss school every day, because they're afraid to go to school because they've been bullied. In Wake County, about nineteen percent of high school students report being bullied, and in middle school, forty percent of middle school students report having been bullied. And one of the things that comes to mind a lot when I talk with people is like, well, that's just kids being kids, they bully, but the research really shows that the impact of bullying long-term is as bad as the impact of child maltreatment in adulthood. So the mental health issues there are really a large concern. So Youth Thrive has about forty different partners that serve youth in Wake County, ranging from 4H, the Boys and Girls Club, to some smaller providers like the Wade Edwards Learning Lab and Foundation. And we just wanna really draw attention to this issue in our community. We want the young people to feel safe, to go to school, and in their homes as cyberbullying is becoming a larger problem.
Just to add to that, to your point, my bullying was in the third grade. I could tell you every second of it. It's like yesterday. Did it make an impression on me? Oh, yeah. And I could tell you story after story after story of people who have walked into my office or we have met with them, kids in particular, and parents, and what bullying is doing. A lot of people still don't quite get it from the standpoint of awareness. So just a real quickie, we had a, a major event over at the Hope Community Church on Sunday, and we talked about bullying, and it was a great, I think, a great event to, again, make people aware that this is a major problem. I've gotten that many emails from parents saying, "My kid has been bullied." By the way, parents have been bullied too on occasion. Either way, so I, I totally commend what you're doing, and our mayor's anti-bullying campaign has been around for about four or five years now, and we're making progress. Do we solve the problem? Of course not. Do we make it better? Yes. And we're gonna continue our efforts, and to that point, I do have a proclamation, which I'll give you in just a second. And it says, "Proclamation by the Mayor in recognition of Bullying Prevention Month," which is October. "Bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology. Various research concludes that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of, millions of American children and adolescents annually, as almost thirty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or a victim." And it goes on and on, and so the point being now, I would like to proclaim the month of October, Anti-Bullying or Bullying Prevention Month through our town, and I encourage everybody to talk about this, and if you have any questions about bullying, we have a very large committee, and we have people in that committee that are, are professionals. We have people like me who just knows a little bit about bullying from our own experiences. And I wanna give you this and take it back, and as I said, October proclaimed Anti-Bullying or Bullying Prevention Month.
Thank you, and I'd love to learn more about your committee and potentially come.
All you gotta do is call me. Love to have you on the team. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks for coming. Okay, let's go to, Agenda Item 6B, Special Recognition, Holly Springs Skyhawks Presentation. Doug Leroy? Doug, are you here? There you are.
Leroy.
Short fella.
That's right.
We don't use the term "short" here.
I've got a couple other.
All right, please introduce him, if you would.
This is Jason Getzman.
Thank you, sir.
He's Vice President.
Hi, Jason.
Holly Springs Skyhawks Radio Control Group, and Daniel Moffett, he's our Treasurer of our club.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Got it.
We are forever kids who were introduced to the model airplane hobby at a very young age and have not recovered, so we're still doing it.
That's a good thing. Nicely said.
So is the presentation loaded?
I guess it's left.
What do I do?
Left click.
All righty. Hey, there we go.
Ooh, look at that.
So about two years ago, we formed a club here in Holly Springs, the Holly Springs Skyhawks, and we're basically organized for the pleasure and recreation of our members. We like, we wanna promote model aviation as a hobby and worthwhile activity in our community of Holly Springs, and of course allow a venue for socialization of our members. And myself and Jason Getzman, we founded the club in 2015 and added Dan. We like to call ourselves, you know, the three legs of a good stool, and we're trying to build something here of lasting value in the community. We're a chartered club with the Academy of Model Aeronautics. The Academy of Model Aeronautics is a National Aero Modeling Association. They were founded in 1934. They're actually been around longer than the FAA. They have over two hundred thousand members, over fifty-five thousand youth, and twenty-four hundred chartered clubs, and more than two thousand affiliated flying sites. They primarily promote education and safety about how to operate model aircraft responsibly. They have a pretty big presence with our government, working with the FAA to keep the airspace safe, which you see in the news almost weekly about drones, since that technology's out there. FCC, because we, these aircraft are flown with radio frequency transmitters, so they've worked with the FCC to make sure we have frequency allocations to make sure that that's not interfering with other types of communications. And of course, they have folks that have worked with local and state government, and recently, there's been representatives from the AMA that have worked with the city of Raleigh and their parks policy with regard to drone, drone flying in the parks. Like I mentioned, we're a chartered club, and there's some, there's some benefits that our chartered club brings to the community. One of those is a safety framework, so in your packets, I think there's a copy of the National Model Safety Code. You can read through that. As members of the AMA, they offer a supplemental liability insurance, which is personal liability in case you, model aircraft causes property or personal injury. So at a minimum, our members have half a million dollars of coverage. And as a club, we also provide supplemental insurance through the Parks and Rec to our flying sites, so there's a $2 million supplemental umbrella policy that in case there's any modeling activity out in the park that causes an issue, we have that coverage as well. And our club pays for that, for the town. Like I said, we were founded in 2015. We're all about trying to bring the hobby to more people. We trained some pilots, father and son, most recently solowed with us. We wanna promote safety and education. We offer, offer free supervised flight instruction. You don't have to be a member of the club. We have a trainer plane and a radio system, we call it a buddy box, that we can give folks like yourselves. You're all honorary members of our clubs starting today. You can come on out, and we'll teach you how to fly. And our community involvement through the Meg Smile Foundation, which we're honoring tonight, and also the Holly Springs Park and Recreation Department. And I'll mention briefly, Meg Smile was when we founded the club. I said, "Well, our club needs a, needs a charity to focus on," and I felt a connection through my knowledge of Meg Smile Foundation and what they're all about, so I reached out.
Great program.
Reached out to Jim Wosley and mentioned our club and said, "Hey, we'd like to be a smile provider," and he said, "Fantastic, great." Last year, we donated, well, actually Horizon Hobby donated a ready-to-fly trainer plane that we donated to their silent auction. It raised almost $300 for their silent auction, so we wanted to keep that going this year. Parks and Rec, I can't say enough about the relationship we formed in 2016 with Parks and Rec. I'll, I'll call out a few folks that have been instrumental in building that good relationship, Steve McElhaney, Carolyn Couch, Lori Puzak, and Jim Kanata, primarily through the Hollyfest connection. In 2016, our give back to the town was we built a kiosk that, that marks the field out there in Sug Farm, and we also did the, completed the stockade fence that goes across the parking area there. So we were, we were post-hole digging for a day. Actually, we got some help with that. We didn't have to do all that digging ourselves. We had to finish it up. Of course, we do Turtle Fest, and we've got Bass Lake Day this weekend, and we've been at Hollyfest now three years in a row. We'll have our, this AMA Flight Simulator trailer again this year that got a lot of kids and adults through there, kind of experience an RC flight in a virtual world, so we'll do that. And our big event this year, which is what we're celebrating tonight, we did a, a fly-in in the community. We called it Wings Over Springs. And for the modeling side of the community, it was a fly-in and swap meet, so we started early and finished kind of late, but in the middle of the day, we invited the public, and we called it Model Aviation Day, and we let folks experience what model aviation was all about. And the first thing we had to do was transform Sug Farm, the big event field, into an aerodrome, and we did that, and we marked off a very nice runway. It was two hundred and fifty feet by five hundred, and you'll see the picture of the biplane that flew out there, and he said that was the shortest landing strip he'd ever been on, so next year, we're gonna have to bump it out another hundred feet or so, but he did fine. We had a pretty good crowd out there, think the public, you know, we nearly got rained out. We, you knew the night before was the, was the, was the storm, and the monsoon.
Monsoon.
The monsoon, the next day, it was just a lot of low fog, but it cleared out for noontime demos. We had a, in the middle, there's a picture, we had a drone racing event in the little two-acre fenced-in area outside the main event field where one of the local hobby shops, Hanger Eighteen Hobbies, had their sponsored rotor racers out there, and they demonstrated what quad racing was all about. We gave away some kids' raffle prizes, and then we had our noontime demos. One of the local modelers, Rick Crowley, has a one-half scale Young Meister biplane that he flew and came on a low pass with smoke on over the fields, so it really felt like you were at a, at a full-scale flying event.
You said it's half, half-size?
Half-size, yeah.
Wow.
It could fly a baby in it.
Okay.
I don't think he does that, though, but.
Okay.
It actually has a five-cylinder radial engine.
Okay, I believe you.
Yeah, it's, it's impressive. So we'll have him back next year. So the summary of the event, we had fifty-two registered pilots, which is a pretty large event, large event. Dan actually pulled some statistics from the Academy of Model Aeronautics and figured out that the average flying event has about thirty-five to forty registered pilots, so we think we can build on this. We probably had about three hundred general public attendees throughout the four-hour period. Overwhelmingly positive feedback, you know, modelers are pretty critical, and they were overwhelmingly saying, "Hey, we didn't realize this is your first event. We thought you guys were, did it like you were seasoned veterans," so it's always good to start out at a high, high point. And then charity receipts. I wanna invite up Carolyn Couch from Parks and Rec Department and Jim Wosley from Meg Smile. We, we raised a thousand dollars for Parks and Rec and $400 for Meg Smile. So can we get a photo op with them?
Of course, come on down.
Oh, and Dan and Jason, come on up, too.
We got somebody at the camera? Yeah, we do. Hello, Jim.
Is that boss?
How you doing? Hi, boss. How you doing?
If you wanna shop this thing, roll down, Jim, up the hitch.
Yeah. I'm not used to doing it, so. You got everyone?
Do you know where your mic went?
Yeah.
Can I go one?
Yep. So last couple slides, we have gotten some press coverage that kind of highlights the town in a very positive way. There's a pretty large community that follows rcgroups.com. It's a, it's a, it's a web, web presence where a lot of modelers hang out, so they did a nice piece on Wings Over Springs. And the AMA is divided up into districts, and District Four covers our state. Jay Marsh is out of Greensboro, and he covered us after we did Hollyfest last year, so that was in, in the January issue, talked about our club and everything, so we're out there in the press. There's our contact information, and then we've got a short little video here just to show you to kind of get a feel for what it is, so you'll get excited about coming out next year. If I can click on that.
This is gonna be a test of our new video equipment. We'll see. So far, so good.
There you go. So I have my friend that operates, Raleigh UAV, did the, did the overflight video, so he's an official drone pilot to take footage.
Well, he wasn't, he wasn't up there doing it, right? That was a drone?
It was a drone, yeah.
Anyway.
We had all types of airplanes, mainly electric. It's just a little foamy airplane, but they did some nice impressive little tricks and aerobatics. This is kind of the size things we fly in the park. We don't fly the half-scale things in the Sug Farm area. So we did have one plane get caught by that tree, so that was good, because we had a hard-lucky day. Award, the gift to the pilot that had the worst luck, and we gave it to that person that found the tree. I was worried we weren't gonna be able to give it to anyone, but make up, make up a character to people to help us out.
I think Kendra Parrish, our Director of Engineering, would love to be on that plane next time. Bye, Kendra? No? Okay. There's your runway, huh?
Yeah. He was really worried about that little dip in the middle.
Yeah.
There he is with his low.
There's the smoke.
Yeah, smoke on, yeah. Everybody liked that.
That's great.
We had a bunch of sponsors in the hobby, and actually, they donated almost $2,000 in prizes for the, for the pilots. We did a pilot raffle giveaway, too, so, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a terrific story. Comments, comments?
I remember a couple of years ago, we sat down, and you'd mentioned that you're interested in starting a, a club like this, and, I mean, it's amazing how far you've come in just a very, very short period of time, so congratulations and thank you.
Awesome. Good job, Doug.
Thank you, very.
Thank you. Great event.
Joni, do we need a motion on this? Joni?
Nope.
We do, right? That's what I thought.
Can we help you get back to the PowerPoint?
Yeah. I think we have to do a motion to accept donation from the High, for the, from the High Springs Skyhawks in the amount of $1,000. Am I correct?
Yeah, so we gotta get back to the PowerPoint. There we go.
Okay.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Well, just, it's in your packet, apparently it's on the slide, so you can just make a motion to accept the $1,000.
Yep.
Yeah, we got it in here.
Go ahead.
Motion to accept donation from the Holly Springs Skyhawks in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
Motion made in second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you again, Doug. Very good job.
Thanks. Looking forward to next year, Doug.
And Jim, thank you, as usual, okay?
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Next, Agenda Item 6C, Special Recognizations. We have a lot of those tonight. 2017 Community Planning Month Proclamation. Gina Klepp.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
So this is the seventeenth year that the Department of Planning and Zoning is standing before you. Through the years, originally, the American Planning Association, the American Institute of Certified Planners primarily endorsed World Town Planning Day. About, probably about ten years ago now, the American Planning Association has designated October as National Community Planning Month. And so we do like to bring it forward that we do have a very active planning department as well as a large number of volunteers that help with the planning of Holly Springs to improve the quality of life for our residents. And so the Department of Planning and Zoning, our primary duty is to lead the development review process for all new projects within the town of Holly Springs. However, a lot of people really aren't aware of all the different things that our department does get involved in, and a lot of things people just don't realize or think about with their home or with new development. We do addressing and review street names for new developments. We provide mapping services for the planning department, fire department, police department, and Parks and Recreation Department. We do zoning enforcement work, which means that we go out when people have complaints about fences, sheds, temporary signs. We're out there making sure that people are in compliance with our regulations to make sure that our community stays looking beautiful. We do final inspections for UDO compliance prior to the occupancy of all new commercial buildings, as well as many of the houses are subject to certain architectural requirements, buffer requirements, so it's the planning department that actually goes out and inspects those to make sure they're done in compliance with the approved plans. We do street tree verification. We also go out and inspect to verify that the street name blades are up before a lot is created and platted, so that way emergency vehicles can find you if there is an emergency. We are very involved with doing our webpage, and then we also are doing a lot of ordinance amendments continuously. Our ordinances, we call them living ordinances, because regulations need to vary as different trends occur or as our vision or our thoughts of how we would like to see new development happens. We're always reviewing and analyzing our comprehensive plan of ways to tweak it, improve it, and modify it as the town's vision, as we continue to grow, changes. And then we're also involved with many different departments with their projects in engineering, Parks and Recreation, Fire, and many other departments. And so we also work with the farmer's market, so, which is an unusual requirement for a planning department, but we do enjoy being part of the farmer's market every single Saturday at the market. Can't tell you how many people approach the information tent saying, "We just moved to Holly Springs. Can you tell us about the town?" And so it works out great having planning staff at the planning, at the farmer's market info tent to be able to tell them about what's going on in town.
Hasn't the farmer's market got several big awards?
Yes, you'll be hearing about that in a couple weeks.
A couple weeks?
Yes.
All right. Stay tuned.
Yes, foreshadowing there. And so we also like to listen to our residents. It is really important for us as planners to be able to meet with our residents, hear what they have to say. After all, the planning department or all town employees, we work for our residents, so we need to make sure that we're aware of what their interests are, what they think are we're doing good, things that we need to improve. And so we have a number of information days where we go out into the community, farmer's market, we do a market, we do a full day during the weekday, at the Hunt Center, we do a day out at the Cultural Center on a Saturday. So we try to get various dates and times, so we can try to meet with as many people as possible. We do a variety of different area plans, which has community meetings and surveys, and then just other planning projects include public information meetings. We speak at Homeowners Association and community organization meetings. So we like to get out and share the information about what is happening in Holly Springs. And it's also important that we provide transparency. A lot of people don't realize how much information we really do share with our whole community. And so, as I had mentioned previously, we have a very active planning and zoning webpage. And so we have a webpage that's designated just for homeowners' information. We have out there all the permit information that's needed, various regulations for home improvement projects that are subject to planning and zoning rules. But the biggest webpage that we maintain and is one of the top frequently visited webpages on the town's site, is the What's Coming to Town page. And on that page, we have all of our plans that we are currently reviewing. We have all the plans that have been approved or that are under construction out on the webpage, so people can see what is happening around town. And you can find it all now either by map, and then there's also another section of it where you can find it by a list of the projects. And when you click on those projects, you get the review schedule, so you know exactly where it's at in the process, and then if there is a public hearing, the date of the public hearing, so you can participate if you would like to share some comments with that. The most important part about this webpage that people are surprised when you tell them is we get submittals on certain Mondays each month. By Thursday of the week that that plan is first submitted, that plan is out on our webpage for the community to see. And so pretty much as soon as we get something brand-new to see, it is available for the public. So it, they get to see it just as soon as we get to see it and start reviewing these projects from the very beginning, and they can watch it as it changes, as they resubmit through the process. We also have a page called Planning in Progress, where we talk about our long-range planning projects that we are currently working on. However, we can't do what we do alone, and so we need help from our residents, and we have a Planning Board and a Board of Adjustment, which is a group of volunteers that come here one Tuesday night a month at least, and volunteer their time to help with the growth and the development of Holly Springs. We have several of our members of the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment tonight. If you want to raise your hands, if you recognize, thank you for coming tonight. And they are very dedicated people that have to read our staff reports, they have to make difficult decisions and/or recommendations to the council each month. And so, like I said, they are volunteers, and they don't get paid for it. They just have a love for their community, and that's what planning is all about. And so we are currently accepting applications for the next year's round of appointments to both the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment, and applications are due December fourth. And we would love to go out and be involved with any other homeowners association or organization, and so we're easy to find. Go to our webpage and give us a call or send us an email, and we'd be happy to have a planner come out to meet with your group and share what's going on in the town of Holly Springs. And really, this proclamation and the celebration of this, and why we feel it's important to bring it up each year in October, is we have a comprehensive plan with a mission statement, "To preserve the small-town atmosphere that Holly Springs offers by establishing a village that enriches the quality of place by encouraging the creation and enhancement of residential and non-residential development, which ultimately fosters a greater sense of community." And that's why we're here, and that's why our residents move here. And so, thank you for all of your support for planning in Holly Springs.
Don't leave yet. Comments or questions? Well said. You did such a good job, I'm not going to read the proclamation, because that would take about twenty minutes, but I will say part of it. This is the same proclamation, I think, that we've given out in the last seven years, maybe? I don't know, something like that? Updated, of course. "It's a proclamation by the mayor, Community Planning Month, October, another October two thousand seventeen. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dick Sears, do hereby proclaim that October two thousand seventeen is, in fact, Community Planning Month in the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month in wetness, et cetera, blah, 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 blah. Signed." And this is for the Planning Department, again, to put in your many others of these. And thank you, Gina, you guys are doing a great job.
You bring order to what could be very chaotic situation.
That's correct.
That's for sure.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the staff and our volunteers. Love working on that.
Absolutely.
Awesome job.
Thank you, Gina. Agenda IM seven A, Consent Agenda, Mayor Potem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second. Which been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Agenda IM nine A, New Business, zero six, DP oh nine, A oh six, Main Street Square Element, C, D, and E, Sean Ryan. I can hear you talking about me. Oh, did you hear, you didn't hear this comment, did you? Should I tell him? I just was whispered in my ear that we should start referring to you as the Dapper one.
Sounds good.
He likes that. He's humble, just like me.
I'll argue it there.
He cleans up so well.
You could get me that on my nameplate, I'd be, I'd be very happy with that.
Dapper?
Yes.
I like it. Joni, can you help with that? We can do that. Go ahead, Mr. Dapper.
All right, just to refresh your memory, this is for Main Street Square, C, D, and E. It was last before the council, about a month ago, on September fifth. It is the out parcel directly along GB Alfred Highway across from the Dunkin' Donuts. The amendment that was before you was a request to reduce the building from a two-story building to a one-story building. However, there were some concerns that were raised by the council regarding the appearance, the architectural elevations of the structure. The applicant has taken those comments into consideration and has done some revisions to the building elevations. Just to remind you what the current approved elevations look like, a small image up in the top corner. The original modifications that were requested, that were presented to the town council back in September are on the left-hand side of the screen here. As you can see, it was a one-story, primarily red brick with some synthetic stone on the top, or on the, the base of the building. And the applicant has made some modifications, which include adding a second brick color, so now both a red-tone brick and a beige-tone brick, enlarged the windows, added additional awnings, made some modifications to the roofline, decorative lights, as well as some decorative brick insets in the corners of the building here. So on the right-hand side of the screen, these are the revisions that the applicant is proposing in hopes of addressing some of the concerns raised by council back in September. With that, the applicant has some additional slides, if you'd like them to come up and kind of walk you through the revisions that they've made. Otherwise, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions first, or you wait till see the applicant, applicant first?
Let's see the presentation.
Yeah, let's do. Please come forward and name and address, please, and we will listen.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Oops, got it.
Thanks.
Trey Adams, three twenty-four Pershing Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Thank you guys again for allowing us to try to bring some new health services to the town, and hopefully something we can all be proud of. I am going to have to take a second to say thank you. We worked pretty hard with Sean on this, and I think you slowing us down has really developed something that really pops. So I'll walk you through some of the things that I, I'm pretty proud of. Like Sean said, we took to heart making it more village-like, helping it tie into and expand on book, really bookmarking that corner of the development to play off the developments behind it and across the street. As you can see, we expanded the windows, brought them down to more of the street level like Mr. Dixon requested, and made them a little bit wider to give it that more sort of villagey, less office-building type feel. Added awnings to complement the, similar to the Dunkin' Donuts, to really help give it that village feel, but, but tie it into each other. And you can see we added, we've got a block, some really nice, you know, masonry on the bottom, brick that will, will tie into the existing red bricks in the, in the development, and then we'll tie in the beige bricks to, to match with the buildings across the street. We got rid of the Ephes. This building has become more expensive, but that's okay, and added the goose necks to really give it that warming, sort of welcoming feel at night. So this is looking up, Warrington heading towards fifty-five. This is as you're coming up the hill into the complex. This is as you're, as you're coming into the development.
Questions or comments? I remember the meeting, so we may have some, hopefully, positive comments. Hank, you were...
I think it, I think it pulls in a little bit from some of the, the surrounding buildings, and it, you know, I think it works much better than the original design. And it, and it, and it's different enough that it, it looks as if it wasn't all built at once. I mean, obviously, it's not all built at once, but it truly looks like it was not. So I think, again, it's, I think it works pretty well.
Other comments, or? Go ahead, Jenny.
This is still technically a story and a half building, correct?
It is. So you can actually see where the Eph, where the, we'll actually have a masonry block. Try to see if I can get to a better. This one's probably the easiest to see it. So the masonry block will actually run, it's a horizontal line underneath the, where the signage blocks are. That is actually where a typical one-story building would stop. And so this is really a little story and a half.
Yeah. So I was looking back at the last, the meeting, the, in first of September, and the architectural design concerns that were, that were voiced, the, how the, how the building itself fit against the other buildings that were there in terms of the appearance and things of that nature, with the other buildings being two stories and this being a story and a half, one story, the difference. And then the, you know, the architectural ingredients that were there versus the other buildings just didn't, the first run-through just did not, didn't work. It didn't have a flavor that you were looking for.
Other comments? Anybody else? No, good?
It ties in a lot better than the original one that you had presented last month.
I give Sean credit, too. He's been a, he was very...
Oh, his name is Dapper?
Dapper, yes, excuse me. Dapper was very responsive.
You're in trouble, fellow.
And a good teammate on this to help us get something that we can all be proud of.
All right. I'll just, just to state my position again, I know I was concerned regarding the, the reduction of office space from two stories to one story, and I agree with fellow council members that this is a much better rendition of what was presented last time, but I still feel like this should remain two stories, given how long this building will be there. As you all said, this is a forty-year building, and, and the build out of the town, the loss of office space in an area designed to have that will be, will be a loss, a loss for us.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, Councilman Villetson, that I, you're probably going to outgrow your building in a blink of an eye, especially when we hear, you know, the doctor talk about, you know, how incredible her practice is growing, but I do think it ties in, definitely ties in, and the improvements look a lot better.
Is that it?
It's ten thousand square foot, right?
Ten thousand five hundred square feet. We are fifty-five percent leased, so we're, the family practice group is doubling their size of their practice, bringing in new providers. I think they've dietitian in other providers. So they will already be growing into this, into the space, but they need it to expand the services. The PT folks, we are regional two-hundred-and-forty locations, top-class provider, that we actually got to come here instead of another town. Now, we still have fifty-five hundred square feet left to lease out, so there's still room to grow here, and I think it'll be a nice addition.
Rough estimate on completion, if we say yes?
July, July, August of next year.
Next year.
We were, we were going to move.
Pass it, Ken.
And the, the pivot folks, we convinced them to come here over another town, and part of that was based on staying on a time schedule, and that would, no approval would complicate them coming here and then further set back the building for some unforeseen period of time.
Sure. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, yeah. How about further discussion? Do we have any further discussion at this point? We'll turn it back to Sean for a second. Dapper, excuse me. You're in big trouble. Another, another conversation? Okay. Somebody want to tackle the motion, please?
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Development of a Major Amendment, zero six, DP zero nine, A zero six, for Main Street Square Element, C, D, and E, as submitted by Bass, Nixon, and Kennedy, with conditions listed in the agenda packets.
Which been made, second?
Second.
Which been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One nay. Am I correct? One nay. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're, thank you, Sean. Dapper, excuse me. I'll remember that. Number nine, other business. I have a few. Number one is speeding. I'm going to start mentioning that every, every meeting we have. We have a problem with speeding in town, but unfortunately, so does every other town. When I talk to the mayors, that's one of them. Traffic is the other one. Running stop signs, I think we've heard of several accidents in town lately, and it's horrible, but in many cases, not all, but in many cases, it was running a stop sign, or stop signs, or flag stops, and go on and on. Crosswalk safety continues on. I think we're still making a little progress. Maybe we'll never be there, but I noticed particularly at the farmer's market, particularly during the farmer's market, people actually stopped. And I remember about a year ago, they didn't, so we're making a little progress there. And then we're still working very hard on the county landfill issues. Some of us are going to be out there again tomorrow, wouldn't be the first time, and stick with us, we're trying hard. It is a county landfill, and they're in charge, but we, we're still working at it very hard. So with that, who's next?
I, I actually, I have two items. First is I attended the Holly Springs Historical Preservation Society meeting last week, and the representative from the Capital Area Preservation, Jeremy, Jeremy Bradham was there, and within like two hours, two and a half hours, he gave such a very informative and entertaining presentation about historical preservation, things that people who own historical homes can, can control as far as preserving it. I mean, just really, I mean, he was an encyclopedia of knowledge, and, well, actually, I'll direct this to you two, because you're the two that will definitely be here for sure, next time there is a town council retreat, I would recommend bringing him in to do a presentation for you, so you can learn about all this stuff. So, yeah, without a doubt, he was, he was very good. And then also, I spoke at the, during public comment at the Wake County Commissioner meeting yesterday evening relative to the...
Can everybody hear him okay in the back? We got new stuff going on, I'm going to make sure. Okay, sorry.
...to the landfill. And really, my, the focus of what I brought to their attention was to really make sure that any effort that Solid Waste Staff puts forth, or wants to put forth relative to odor abatement, that they really have a, an open checkbook to, to, because right now, with that buyer's scientific odor abatement system, we're not seeing the, or they're, I said, they're not seeing the results they want to see.
Correct.
And of course, we aren't either. So that definitely, whatever they need, I encourage the commissioners to really just fund the, the solid waste staff to get them what they need to make sure that this gets addressed.
Good points. As I said earlier, I think if we... Good points. As I said earlier, I think if we, if I had a dollar for every time we called the director of landfill with odor complaints, sending complaints, talking to Sig Hutchison there, in fact, the chair of the county board of commissioners, we're still doing the best we can. It's tough. And I remember when we moved here in 1995, in 1998 or '09, I think it was, we started marching against what we called the dump, all due respect, up and down Main Street. And it was a time and a place where we didn't win. And I know why now, but I didn't know why when. But we did our best. So I just want you to know that this is, I think, the sixth or seventh landfill in our town, and just what it is. So we're still working on it to try to fix the problem.
I'll also add that I did commend them for passing that resolution against aerosolization of leachate as well, so.
The garbage juice. And we actually have that in writing. I have it in my office. What, what he's talking about is that's the one where they shoot the, you know, shoot the juice up in the air, and then blow it out. Well, if I lived in Oakall or Arbor Creek, I think people get sick, just that simple. And, and the bacteria's still there, the viruses are still there. The governor was asked to veto it, and I promised him if he did, I'd tell him he's the best governor we ever had. So I got to keep my promise. He vetoed it. It's a stupid bill. It's a bad bill. It's a, well, never mind. Don't get me started. But that was, that was something that we actually did accomplish, and I think it was a good thing to do. So with that, who else? Sherry?
I just want to say that, you know, thank Councilman Dixon for going last night, but that we were going to stay on it. It's not the last commissioners meeting, as well as meeting with individual commissioners, Matt Calabria, and talking to Sig also. We just can't be quiet about this anymore.
Nope.
It's, it is starting to become an issue with quality of life.
Totally agree.
So, you know, I plan on keeping people up to date on what we do, and hopefully everybody else will, too. And then the other thing I had was, with Anti-Bullying Month, Holly Grove Middle School is going to take part in support for anti-bullying this month, or until October 18th, by decorating classroom doors with different ideas for anti-bullying. And so hopefully, at our next meeting, I can, I'll send some pictures to Joni, and we can show our winners and everything.
I'd sure like to see that, too.
Sure.
Good. Good, Tom?
Yep.
I'll just add that Holly Grove Middle School will be hosting an informational meeting for Wake County Public Schools on upcoming reassignments with the new Buckhorn Creek Elementary opening. I attended the District 8 meeting last night. Very informative, a lot of information. They're still informing on draft one, so there's still time to get public comments, public input, and learn more about which schools around here will be affected.
We haven't firmed this up yet, but I haven't even had a chance to talk to Joni yet. I got an email today. I'm way behind on emails, but I'll get there. Dr. Merrill would like to be with us, Joni, next, next meeting, from the, Dr. Merrill, yeah. So I'll talk to you later on that. But if you're interested in the schools, which I think we all are, and I think we've got some darn good schools, you might want to come back and just hear what he's got to say. I don't know exactly how he's going to say what he's going to say, but he's requested officially to come to our meeting next time, and talk about what's going on at the schools, and the legislature, and a few other things. I think you'll find it very interesting. Whether you, you know, go for it or not, I don't know, but there's a lot of stuff. So with that, managers report?
Yes, sir. Since our last town council meeting, we had our first community charrette, if you will, for the Southern Area Planning Initiative. And I just wanted to thank those that participated. We probably had roughly 70 residents. In addition, that doesn't include the staff, that doesn't include town council members that were present, but I felt like it was a very productive exercise. I know Jay Smith with O'Brien Atkins was very encouraged by the feedback. We felt like it was very positive. And that's the first of three meetings. We'll have another meeting later this month, and we'll keep the citizens informed about that as well. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank you. I think that was from 5:30 till about 8, 8:30. And we understand during the week, folks have busy schedules, and a number of people took time to come out that evening. So just wanted to say thanks for that. This coming week is Bass Lake Days. So, Tom, there'll be a lot of traffic in the neighborhood. But that's okay, too. That'll be a well-attended event. It looks like the weather's going to be fantastic, and that's from 2 to 6. And then the following week is the world-famous Chili Cookoff for the farmers market. That'll be on the 14th.
No?
I've got it here on the schedule.
Correction?
Cancelled. We need to get it off the calendar. Okay.
No chili?
The number four, police versus fire.
All right. Police...
At the farmers market. Andrew. I'm like taking Jessica's stuff away.
You can, you can say it anyway. Yep. I won't tell. Jessica, are you listening?
No. So we did have our Chili Cookoff was planned to be our final event at the farmers market this season. We hadn't had it in a couple years. We had a citizen that was going to lead getting us teams to participate. However, he had to take a job out of town, was unable to help us. And so we started having some conversation internally. We've had a big request for expanding our winter farmers market, so we're going to start doing an outside farmers market as well for the winter. So our first day is going to be Saturday, November 4th. And our kickoff event is going to be Chief Smith versus Chief hearing in Police versus Fire Chili Cookoff.
Where will that be?
And it's going to be in the same outdoor location in the Baptist Church parking lot.
Okay. Thank you, Gina. So some five-alarm chili, right?
Mm-hmm.
Ah, and then some. Got it. And if you don't like it, the other side will arrest you, right?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, close session?
Yes, sir.
Gracious sakes, motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Motion been made in second and twice. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.